We will start the meeting right now with the flag salute, please. And if you're able to remove your hats, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, well, um, we have a very special district highlight tonight. Kevin, do you want to take the lead on the district highlight?
I'll just take the lead of welcoming them and introducing the two of them. Aliana Barahas. Right down there, she has a name tag, a name plate and a beautiful picture on the wall over there. So you are, congratulations to you as a junior student board representative. And next to her, Marian Carlson, Marian, you also have the official name plate in front of you. You also have official picture on the wall. And we'd like to welcome you and congratulate you in your new position as junior student representative to the board. Congratulations.
I wrote a little quick thing. So welcome, Miriam and Aliana. On behalf of the Seela School Board. We're proud to welcome our new student, uh, student board members. Your voice matters and I already talked individually to you. And we're excited to have you at the table as we work together to support Seela students, staff and families. As representatives, you bring a really important perspective to our conversation. Uh, you're the experts, really, uh, out of all of us on the board here. You're the most in touch with the hopes, the, the concerns, um, the daily life at, at the high school especially. And we hope we're going to get you into the other schools as well. Um, and the board as a few years ago, uh, in, increased or enlarged the number of students that are on the, um, on, uh, student representatives for the board so that we can get more student voice. Um, because you're the ones impacted by the decisions we make. So we're really glad that you stepped forward. Uh, um, to represent your peers. Um, and, uh, we look forward to working with you. So thank you very much for, for, uh, starting your tenure here on the school board with us. Very exciting. Uh, all right. Our next item on the agenda is guidelines for public comment. We do not have any written public comment and we do not have any comment from the audience. Uh, either we'll move on to item number four, which are the meeting minutes. Uh, we have two meeting minutes as we usually do for, um, the study session. September 11th and for the, uh, regular board meeting on August 28th. All move that we approve the meeting minutes from those, uh, two meetings. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, are there any questions or comments about those meeting minutes?
I would just say, I want to apologize specifically to the student reps for missing the September 11th meeting. I got a day job. It's a busy day job in September. So, welcome.
That, that you would have been really impressed with their interviews, Joe, for sure. That, I, yeah, I know, I know. It is great, isn't it? All right, great. Uh, all those in favor of approving the meeting minutes signify with an eye. Eye. All those opposed and abstentions? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is item number five. Um, and it has a, a pretty small human resource action sheet. I don't know if there's anything that we need to highlight on that in particular. Some appointments and resignations, um, payroll, goods and services. Chris, is there anything on either of those two that?
Nothing on payroll, goods and services, but I would just like to say, um, rest in peace to Rebecca Varner. We did lose her recently. So I, I would like to say that tonight.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry. I moved too quickly through that on the HR, but, um, yes, thank you for saying that. The whole board feels the same. All right, uh, item D is a long list of, uh, second readings and adoptions. Um, of fairly routine, uh, policies, uh, from a policy 111, the oath of office. Uh, I'm not going to read, there's, uh, what 10 or so of these here. I won't read all of them, but, um, are there any, uh, I'll, I'll, well, I guess we'll move for all of these here at the end. Are there any comments or questions about that long list of policy updates? Grading progress reports. Um, dis- dissemination of, uh, student offenses, notification of threats, non-discrimination. Student discipline, use of school facilities, personnel records, a lot of its kind of cleanup and language. Kevin?
A, a lot of them has to do with new laws that are enacted and the policies have followed those. And so it's bringing all those into line, which are all current policies, but bringing them into line, uh, with current law.
Excellent. Uh, item E salute, item E is an annual program and policy review of the, uh, highly capable program or what we call Hi-CAP. Um, and Hunter is here. Hunter, do you want to kind of give us a thumbnail of what the overview is?
Yeah. So the overview just includes our total current enrollment for students that qualify for highly capable programming. It varies grade level to grade level. Uh, it kind of evens out around 25 to 30 students when students are in middle school. When students qualify for highly capable services, they stay qualified forever regardless of, uh, uh, what, what their level is. Um, we have our referral window opening up here in October 6th is when it opens and, and that's open through, uh, middle of December. And referrals can be made by parents, by teachers, by students themselves. They'll, that'll be sent out to the community on October 6th and, uh, and how to do that. Uh, through, and we also do universal screening, uh, so for any students that might not be referred individually, we do all, we, all second graders and all sixth graders are, uh, screened through what's called the COGAT. It's a, it's an assessment that can tease out, uh, if student might have highly capable, uh, capabilities. Um, and then really how we provide highly capable services based off of our numbers is we, in the K through eight model, we cluster our Hi-CAP students together. Um, so they have like-minded peers that they can do extensions with. Um, and then in high school, uh, and then we also do intervention for, uh, for all students, but our highly capable students are, uh, clustered even further there in homogenous groups. So they're getting instruction at their level. At high school, then it really opens up to, uh, kind of where their passion and where they're, they can do advancement within their courses, college and high school, running start, et cetera. Uh, one thing we are doing this year is I think getting better at marketing why our program is set up the way it is. Uh, cause some of the dynamics that are in place are just total amount of students that are qualified. I think it's, uh, larger districts are able to kind of consolidate students across grade level, uh, across schools in one grade level and have, uh, a full classroom. Uh, that would be like a self-contained, highly capable program. Our numbers don't drive that. Um, so that's what we've gone with the clustering model. I think explaining that to our staff or our community is one thing. Marketing and finding out are the ways we can improve it is something we're actually taking a team, uh, next month to, to find out. What's the best, uh, practices for supporting our highly capable learners? So, but, uh, other than that, nothing has changed from, from years past. This needs to be approved annually so that way we can get additional, um, additional grant for highly capable services to help fund some of the, helps fund our program.
Are those state grants?
It is a state grant.
State grants, right. Yep. And, um, uh, are, are there any questions or, or concerns about the highly capable program? Uh, do students have any comments on Hi-CAP program questions? We're okay so far? Okay. Uh, it is a question that comes up, I think, to board members every once in a while, and you probably hear from parents and community members as well about it. It's the, the not bringing them all into one class is also a philosophy though.
Correct.
As well, right? So even if we could, would we bring them all into one class or is that kind of up in the air?
It's, uh, the research that we've gotten, and it's been a few years since we've gone through and so I, that's why, part of the reason we're taking a team to a conference. Is that when you do that, um, you lose experiences of being able to be mentors to other students in your class. It creates kind of a track system that haves and have nots. Uh, the other, uh, dynamic that's at play is we have a, a dual program that, uh, it makes it even harder, right? So if we have 20 students in a grade level and 10 of them are a dual class and 10 are in a monolingual English, English class, that's just not enough numbers. Um, so, uh, and there's a lot of benefit of having heterogeneous grouping too. So our, our program really is, meant to have intentional homogenous grouping with alike skill level students. And then also having heterogenous groups. So we can, uh, students on both ends of the spectrum, regardless of content can learn from each other. And that's where the most powerful learning is. If you remove all the students, uh, who have a kind of expertise in one specific academic content. Uh, it, it, it not only hurts the learners who are, might be a little bit further behind, it also doesn't strengthen the learning of, of our students who are highly capable too.
It's a real, I, I've known that through years of talking about this, it's a real challenge to keep up with those students that get it right away. I know that's just, uh, for teachers, that's just a, a really difficult task, I guess, to differentiate for those students. Um, are there, did you say that you're taking some teachers with you to this?
Yeah. So we're taking one rep from each, uh, building site, uh, along with myself and Rachel Dibble. To go and learn, uh, about what, what are the, uh, any new updates around, um, highly capable programs, especially, especially what I'm interested in is, uh, given the context of the size of our, uh, enrollment in, of students who qualify, is this the best model to have? Um, and then if it is, how do we market it? So that way parents understand it, teachers understand it. And, um, so we don't continue to get the questions that, that come up and that people, um, are bought into it.
Excellent. Good. Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll move on. Thank you very much, Hunter. Appreciate that. Uh, to the, uh, school improvement plan for a number of, uh, Seela schools, the Seela Open Doors, Seela Academy Online, Home Link, Seela Academy Online, Seela Academy Auxiliary. Uh, Kevin, this school improvement plan is a state, uh, mandate. Is that right? For these particular programs? Um, and we are, they are helping us to bring those programs up to speed a little bit.
I'll turn most of it over to Hunter because he's in charge of these, but it, it's really all of our, what we called our alternative learning, ALE programs, choice programs you've heard before. Uh, these are all of them. Um, and, and they have qualified for support from our state, uh, through the school improvement process. So Hunter, you want to add to that?
Yeah. So, um, it's called through the Office of, of School Improvement, uh, OSSI. And, uh, the reason why we need to have these approved is two of these are at the level where we can get additional funding for support. Uh, it's Seela, uh, Seela K A online. Uh, and how the school improvement process works is you're identified in a cycle. So that these were actually identified a few years ago. The program that was identified was our Home Link, uh, program. That has now shifted to we are Seela K A, uh, Academy. Um, the other one that has qualified is, uh, Seela Auxiliary, which is our, uh, how we serve students that are enrolled at Sundown. Uh, and so those are our students, even though they might not be from our district, when they're at Sundown, they are our students. And so with that, the reason why we've qualified for school improvement is, uh, because of our metrics. A lot of that is around state testing for these specific programs. Uh, given Seela Academy, or sorry, Seela, uh, Auxiliary at Sundown. That is a highly, a mobile population where students are there for maximum of 45 days. They're going back to their home districts. So that's always going to be a program that's probably going to be in school improvement. Cause we don't have data to show, yeah, they took state tests with us, even though they're our students. And then the online program was new last year. And so our hope is that, uh, our, our data will start to increase using the Greenways platform. Cause students have been more successful with that. Uh, with that also said is usually students who are choosing to go online, they, they don't want to be in person. And so a lot of the reason why we've qualified for, uh, school improvement for those programs is because they don't take the state tests. And then so our, our, our scores don't look good for those programs if we don't have any kids taking the test.
And they, they disaggregate those from the rest of the population.
Correct.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So every, all of our entities that we have to report accurate, um, enrollment and assessment data. And these four are the ones that are, the, the state has deemed that, um, would need the most support and improving. And it was pretty typical, alternative programs usually are that way in each district. Um, because it's, uh, traditional school hasn't worked for students or families in one way or the other. Um, and traditional metrics also don't necessarily capture the, that it's working for them.
And this is their first year on the improvement plan? Is that correct for the?
No, this is actually year three of this cycle.
Okay, okay.
So, um, and, and two of these, uh, auxiliary, which is, this is the hard part, is they're different names. So Seela Academy Auxiliary is sundown and then Seela Academy K through eight is our online program for K through eight. Those two actually come with additional funding. The other two do not come with funding, but we still had to have our school improvement plans approved by the board. Uh, as a requirement from the state.
Are there any questions about the school improvement plans? That for the student board reps, the, the, the state takes our state testing and looks at what, which schools are struggling or which schools are doing very well. And the schools that are struggling, they give us extra support to help bring those scores up. So that's what we're talking about right here. All right. And then we have for item G, thank you very much, Hunter. For item G, we have a donation of soccer shorts. Uh, that we need to approve or fi- finances for soccer shorts. And this comes from a generous donation from King's Row. Uh, the, the, uh, the Seela restaurant that is a, a mainstay for many, uh, many soccer players and other people. We very much appreciate that. And then we have one final item on the consent agenda. Which is out of state and overnight travel requests. And there are, six of these out of state travel requests. I think one or two got added here to the agenda. Um, Lori Ozanich going to a chef and fellowship. Uh, Maggie Usini, um, and a student going to the National F's. Wait a minute, Fall Leadership Conference, excuse me. Morgan Rodriguez to present at the ACTE Career Tech Vision Conference. Jeff Anderson to present at the British Columbia Technology Associations in Delta, British Columbia. And then Hunter, Brian and Rachel and Zach. I think we were just maybe talking about this. Lacey and Jared Brink, Brian Bueller attending the Hi-CAP convention in Bellevue. And finally, Michelle Garrettson and Michelle Ladd, uh, and Maggie Usini and Sherry Brink. Um, doing a Washington FACSE board duties. Are there, uh, any comments or questions about those overnight travel requests?
I have a comment question. So of these six travel requests, there's one student traveling and I know that for the past couple of budget years, we've been very careful about not having, non-student travel. So are we feeling a little more flexible? I mean, these are all very important. I, we should be doing these things. I'm just curious where, where we stand like financially. Are we comfortable?
To a point, not, we're not out of the woods by any means, but we're at, to a point. Uh, many of these, uh, you know, we tried to, we tried to take these in that, these people that are especially our staff members are in either leadership positions or they're presenting. And we, we look at those differently.
There is grant money.
And there is grant money. And then there's also like, for example, the Hi-CAP conference. That's part of the budgeted funds that we receive. And are expected to do this type of learning for our staff to better the program for our students. Yeah, you will, I would, I would say this is kind of a, a larger number at one time of staff related travel. And that you're probably going to see more student related travel as a year progresses. So, good question.
Yeah, yeah, I did see that too. I just, I just noticed that it was a little more heavily staff than we've seen recently.
More than likely, you won't see this sheer number, uh, in coming months. You'll see a more sporadic and then you'll see a larger increase of student related travel too. But yeah, financially, we're still in a very similar state than we were before.
Well, and it's, it's, it's a kind of thing like, uh, paint and carpet that you can put off for a few years. Uh, but eventually it, that starts catching up with you. So it's, it's, uh, it is.
To be clear, I support it.
Worthwhile, worthwhile stuff, right? All right, uh, uh, I will move that we approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify with an eye. Eye. All those opposed and abstaining. All right, we're moving on to item six, which, are, uh, some legal things we need to do for the Wilbur Rep Technical Education Center. Uh, and some resolutions for, um, CTE project and signatures and so forth. Uh, Kevin, do you want to, uh, tell us a little bit about, uh, the Wilbur Rep and the resolutions?
Well, as you know, we are, uh, moving forward on, um, using the generous donation from Mr. Rep, uh, to enhance our facilities at the high school by constructing a, a tech center, uh, named after him. Uh, with that, I think you also realize that we have, because it's eligible for some additional state funding match, not a significant amount, but enough to, to go through the process. There are certain things that need to be done in order to qualify for that state match. Both of these in regards to the ed specs as well as the resolutions are, are things that need to be done. For those of you who've been on the board for a while, you may have remembered doing these things for other projects that they, uh, they are required. Whenever you see like, uh, D form, D three you see down there, those are, those would notify you that these are things that are required to do. If you're going to accept state assistance. Uh, what I, the first one on the, the educational specifications, this is important, the process that our architects take us through, which is really to determine the needs of the people who are going to be working in there and the needs of our students who are going to be using those spaces. And so the specifications are getting down to the detail of what's going to be in those classrooms. What's, uh, what's, what's going to be needed in order to provide and meet what, what we believe will were wanted for our students. Uh, Chris, you want to add anything more to those?
It's good. You covered it.
Big pictures and equipment, drinking fountains, bubblers, lockers. It's that kind of stuff, right? Boy, and pictures.
All kinds of different things.
I don't know if your packet, do you have the report in your packet of the, what the Wilbur Rep Center might look like? Now, look, doesn't that look awesome? I'm really excited about that. Uh, it, uh, when I was in Norway in 2022, all they had spent similar amounts of money, uh, to, really beef up their CTE programs and to track students in that direction and towards college. Uh, and it was one thing that I thought, I really want to bring that emphasis home back to, uh, the Seela School District. And I just think we're moving in the right direction with all that stuff. It's, it's really good.
This is also timely in preparation for the October study session where Brent Harding, uh, from NAC Architecture will come in remotely and present to you. Uh, where we've been, where we currently are and where we're going with both of the projects. So it'll be a good insight. Uh, he's going to update us on the schedules, going to update us on the renditions that they have. You see some, some of those probably within the, the, uh, ed specs, but, uh, in more detail. Uh, and give you just some general information. Then we've left some time for a lot of questions that you may have about either the, either of the two projects. But normal things that we do when we start to move through these projects.
Excellent. And we'll need to do each of these, um, separately to have a votes on each of these separately. So I move that we, uh, approve the Wilbur Rep Tech, Tech Center Educational Specifications. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Great. Uh, all those in favor signify with an eye. Eye. All those opposed with a nay and abstentions. Uh, that passes, uh, item B, resolution 2025 dash 19. Authorization of signatures, CTE addition project, 2025 20 racial imbalance, CTE. 2025 21 new in lieu, D three S H S outdoor covered work yard. And these are all things required by the state in order for us to get matching funds. Uh, are there, or at least funds, not necessarily matching, right? But additional funds. It is matching. Great. Fantastic. Um, I move that we approve those, uh, three resolutions. Yep, thank you. Uh, all those in favor signify with an eye. Eye. All those opposed and abstentions? All right, we're moving on to item seven, which is putting our new board representatives on the spot. Uh, and since it's your first one, you may not have an update. Um, but what, what we'd like is, uh, you know, for you to kind of look ahead at the agenda and to ask your, um, networks at the school and, uh, you have younger brothers that are in the school system as well, Marian. To kind of get a sense of how their buildings are and what's happening at their buildings. You can use that as well, um, to give us, uh, your sense of how things are going. Let me just quickly ask, do you have an update? How about this, Aliana? How's the start of the school year so far? Going good? How's choir so far? What? What are you working on? You want to give us a hint? All right. Well, that's the first thing you, you know, right? Talk about on the spot. You have a microphone now. Uh, the phone lines are open. You can vote for, all right. So, uh, thank you very much for being here. Um, and, and, uh, what, what, as I said, we will be visiting schools throughout the quarter and throughout the year. Um, and we will send text messages to you to try and invite you along on some of those visits. Board members will so that you really get a sense of the whole district. Um, I think probably sometime this fall, I haven't talked to Kevin about this. Um, it might be a good idea for, for us to go around this building and kind of meet the people that are involved in the administration building. Cause not a lot of people get to see that side of the district and that's kind of the side that we deal with. So, uh, that'd be a good, a good tour to have, I think sometimes. So stay tuned for that. Uh, all right, we, um, have moved a couple of things to our next. Is it, will it be the study session or the, maybe the study session or maybe the next, uh, business meeting? Um, including some student data that we're going to review. Um, uh, so that's, there's not a report from the executive director of student learning. Uh, and Chris, we don't have a report from you right now. We put some of that off as well. So we're moving on to item 10, which is the superintendent report.
All right. I do have a few items for you. Nothing really earth shattering, but just some events. Uh, we had a community forum, uh, on Tuesday that I led, all kinds of different topics were, uh, provided, uh, for me to speak to. Um, we had two, uh, parents show. Unfortunately, there was not more, but the two parents got a lot of really good information and they got a lot of, uh, questions answered, not only about the topics what that were presented, but also a lot of other things too. So we, we did spend the three of us in a very small conversation. Uh, talking about public education, talking about our schools and programs. And, uh, I think both people who, uh, who attended felt it was very worthwhile. So, next one is I believe in mid-November and so we'll start publicizing that as well. Homecoming week. Uh, I know our high school students know that next week is a full week of homecoming, traditional, very traditional things. Uh, it's also a spirit week for the district. So you'll see all kinds of different ways to show spirit. It involves things that, that are going on during the school day. It involves activities. It involves athletics. It involves a parade on Wednesday for the community. So, uh, all kinds of things. Uh, I'll kind of provide a overview of that, uh, in board notes tomorrow. So you know when things are happening. Uh, next time, uh, you get together is our October study session on the ninth. Uh, I've shared with you that, uh, a portion of that study session or the whole, if whatever is, is choose will be devoted to, uh, more information from the district's architect, uh, with regards to the Wilbur Rep project and the field turf project. Uh, 10 10, the following day is a no school day for our students. It is a teacher training in service day. Not only here, but it's one of those ones in, in our state that has been used for a teacher in service day. So students will not be in session, but many of our staff will be here. Uh, two things as we look into October as far as weeks, we have a traditional safety week, uh, which is October 20th through 24th. Do a lot of our training, our drilling, our communicating on the importance of school safety. That's done a lot at the building level, but also some different district stuff as well. You have a board meeting on the 23rd of October. And believe it or not, we are already getting ready for fall parent conferences. It doesn't seem like we should be thinking that far ahead, but we are. Uh, last full week of October, October 27th through 30, 31st. So there you go.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, and, uh, I, I, I want, uh, I will, we'll move on to, uh, board communications. Is there anyone that has board communications, any comments or questions in the board? I, I've been, we, we've all been receiving, um, uh, emails from Becky Goss, who's the new, um, athletic director at the high school. Does she have a second role at the high school? Assistant principal and athletic director at the high school. And I just wanted to commend her tonight for the communication that she's had with us. It's, it's a different style than, uh, the previous athletic director and it, I feel, um, very involved in what's going on with the spirit week that's coming up. And with the, the events that are coming, it's nice to have a one place to check to see, uh, everything that's happening. Um, so excellent job for Becky. I'm just think she's doing terrific work so far. Okay.
I gotta do a shout out for Becky too, because, um, she put on two events that really were a lot that she did to lead to their success and the planning, organization, getting the resources, getting the right people in the right place. And, uh, these are not easy events to put on, but they both turned out to be really, really special events and ones that I think hopefully we can continue. The first one was, uh, an outdoor high school volleyball match. We are the first, our Seela Vikings High School and the Eastmont Wildcats are the first teams in Washington state who have ever done a sanctioned WIAA volleyball match for records. So a huge accomplishment and Becky had a tremendous amount to do with that. Yakima Sports Assor- uh, Association was a great partner with that. And then, um, our students, who a lot of them assisted that day with putting a court together. But our, our custodial and maintenance teams did a fantastic job of adjusting their responsibilities to, uh, get that, get that court put down and make it a safe venue. And it, and it turned out to be just an incredible night. Um, the weather was perfect. Uh, just, uh, Chris and I were both there. It just was, it was one of those nights I will remember for a long time. Seeing our student athletes and Eastmont, uh, out there playing volleyball. our student athletes and Eastmont, uh, out there playing volleyball under the lights on a soccer football stadium.
I would just note that, uh, Becky did a really nice job figuring out when to, uh, look at having that, that match outside. They, um, the sport court was already at the Sun Dome, the timing was. So the cost to rent it was minimal and it was paid for out of their fundraising account. So I always like to add that when, uh, since we're in a, you know, tight place with our budget and she was very responsible with that. So, worked good.
So I'm not sure that she'll ever do the second event the same time that she does the outdoor volleyball. But Friday night, last Friday night in a home football game with West Valley, uh, we did a, so she did and led a, uh, a recognition of salute to service. And she invited, uh, members, uh, of all kinds of different services. Armed services, our local first responders invited them to the game. They set up different, uh, different locations where they could have community and student involvement. We had our, our police department, fire department, uh, ambulance reservices. We also had members from, um, uh, the Training Center join us. And, uh, as well as, um, West Valley High School has had as a traditional ROTC program. They were also invited and they actually did the colors, which was fantastic as well. So it brought out not only those who are, um, supporters of our athletic program, but a whole bunch of other people out to an event. Uh, that was very well attended. Uh, we got lots of great props from not only our supporters and families, but the West Valley just had great things to say about doing that. So it was really nice to hear that. And anytime that a Viking can beat a Ram in a game, always a very good night. And so, uh, hats off and congratulations to our football team, but also really, uh, to Becky and her organization of planning those two events. So, well done.
I did like seeing it recognized as a, a former Mid Valley rivals in the paper. They, they noted that. I thought, all right, there we go. But now, what, we have East Valley for homecoming or Othello for homecoming?
The, we are Othello tonight and Toppanish for our.
Upinish, okay.
So, yeah, I thought, yeah, they're.
Coming up. Okay, great. All right, uh, I think it, it may be a record, it may not be, I'm not sure, but we're done very quickly today. Thank you for adjusting the agenda for the, the people that have to, uh, leave quickly today or then, so that the people that are not here today don't miss too much. So I really appreciate that. All right, uh, with that, we will adjourn the meeting.